To the match for health benefits for Governing Board and Personnel Commissioners to match those in the AFT-NJSD tentative agreements for 2014-15, effective July 1st, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, okay, so we actually left that item start, I see, yeah. That brings us to the end of the General Functions and to the public hearing. Wait.
Yeah, we have two items for-
Oh, we got two, two public hearings, okay. Right. Public hearing number one, we will open at 7:52 PM, the 2014-15 CSEA Initial Contract Proposal Reopener. Is there any public comment? And if there is no public comment, we will close that hearing at 8:53 PM.
Oh, 7:53.
7:53 PM, thank you.
That was an hour and one minute.
That was one fat, hey, you blanked.
I didn't know I took a nap.
And we will open the 2014-15 Jefferson Elementary School District Counter Proposal to CSEA, Chapter 233, at 7:54. And there, I guess, is no public comment on this part either. And we will-
Good, right?
What?
This is a good thing, right?
Yes, this is a good thing. We will therefore close this public hearing at 7:55 PM, give or take. Okay. Bring to Section 2, Curriculum and Instruction, we have Acceptance of Donations.
And once again-
Mr. Otidie, this is your favorite.
Once again, this is my favorite part, but once again, to all those that I'm about to announce, thank you very much. I would like to thank FD Roosevelt PTA, Philanthropic Ventures Foundation, Box Tops for Education, Creative Marketing Arts, Wells Fargo Foundation, and Ms. Caroline Wong, Bay Area Special Olympics Lions Club, Share Program, Ms. Lathein, and Mr. Shui Nguyen, Parents of Room 247 and KB at Thomas Edison, thank you for your donations, and I motion to accept the donations.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and thank you to everyone who makes contributions to our schools, large and small. Okay, and we have a report here on our local accountability draft plan, or plan draft.
Good evening. So, this is a draft of the Local Control Accountability Plan. My purpose tonight is to really orient you to this draft. It's not a required meeting to have, I just wanted to have some transparency with you and the public, so that everyone can see the draft before it needs to come to the public hearing, so there's a process for this. So, to refresh your memory on the LCAP, I know we've come to you several times, but just for a reminder, the Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP, is a requirement of districts to disclose how we're spending the local control funding formula to have high-quality education programs. And so, to remind you that the LCAP has to have eight state priority areas, you've hopefully this recall chart, you've seen this before. Those eight state priority areas need to also be in our annual goals, and so we have district goals, board goals, there are six district board goals, five of them are addressed in the LCAP, the sixth one is being fiscally prudent, so that one is not necessarily included in the LCAP.
Well, that's all right.
So, the annual goals also need to address all of our students, as well as numerically significant student groups or subgroups, and numerically significant is 30 students or more in that student group, except for foster youth, if you have 15 or more. And I believe our district is actually right under that, we don't have that, but we're still looking at that student group anyway, whether we have to be accountable to it or not. And as a reminder, you've seen this chart several times, or these dates, we started this process back in October, where we started learning about the LCAP. In January is really where we started kicking it off, I think our big event was with AFT, we started with AFT and CSEA, just kind of gathering feedback, and then we've, I've held, I could probably talk about the LCAP in my sleep, I've been having lots and lots of meetings. And so, we, by the end of March, we heard from every school, every parent group, and I was able to get all that input and write a draft. And then I brought that draft to several groups, the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee, the District English Language Advisory Committee, as well as representatives from all school sites, the administrator, a teacher rep from the school site council, a parent rep from the school site council, AFT union representation, classified representation, and then representation from special ed, just different groups, so that everyone had an opportunity to look at this draft. And then I got feedback from these groups, a lot of the feedback actually was just clarification, so I documented all the questions, and I put responses, and they're posted on the website under the Curriculum Instruction webpage, which is, you'll see the link at the end of this presentation. And then also, I got some wordsmithing, instead of saying decrease, say increase, to make it more positive. So, I did a little wordsmithing, so you'll see some of those changes are in this draft that you see today. But what I want to do is, the draft, the goal of the LCAP was intended to be simple and easy, and they wanted to keep it short and easy for the public to read, it's still 22 pages long, so I wanted to make something accessible to everyone. So, I have the yellow flyer that's handed out, is really just an explanation of what the LCAP is, and then our five goals, and then the major activities that we're proposing in this LCAP, just bulleted out, and then next to it are the priority areas, so on the back of the yellow flyer are the eight priority areas listed, so you can see how it's related, just so that it's an easy, accessible way for the public to see what we're doing in our district and what we're proposing. And we're working on getting this translated, so that we have more families can access this. So, the last time, oh, you're all reading it now. It's posted on the website as well. But, the last time we met, Ms. Kessler and I shared information, and we've shared a lot of these activities that you're seeing on here, but since then, and since some of these stakeholder meetings, we've added a few things in that are in this draft. One of the things we've added, based on feedback, was two more coaches, one for English Language Arts and one for math, to hire for next year. We have so much professional development, we need so much more support with one-on-one and team coaching, that we felt that that was a need. And also, the last meeting, you gave us guidance to provide direct funding to the school sites to support specific site needs, and so we were able to inform the sites that what their allocation would be, so they can really start thinking and planning, that's why we asked you, so that they can start planning, and I'll go, I'll talk about that in a moment. And then, we also are providing clerical support for our district nurses, so that they don't have to do some of those reporting requirements that are, we have to do, but they can spend more time with students and staff to support our students' needs. And then, we're also adding in two, two, two-hour noon yard supervisors for each school site, a minimum. Some schools have larger schools, so they would have a few more, but it's at least two for the schools, so that we can improve student safety, so that the principal is not the one that has to be out there on the yard and be the only one, that we can have others out there and looking out for student safety during lunch. So, those are some changes since the last time we shared, but this was all included in the drafts. For the school site funding piece, that every school site is getting, a per pupil amount, I think we, it was $513 per unduplicated account, and so, to make sure that the school sites are addressing the LCAP plan and following and in alignment with our district plan, every school site is submitting or has submitted this worksheet, so they're identifying what state priority area that their activity they want to do is addressing, and the activity has to be within four areas, it's student support, so kind of a response intervention, so what interventions, they're providing for students, parent engagement, and so it's really looking for student support first, and then, okay, now what are you doing for parent engagement, okay, now what are you doing for students that maybe need support, this non-academic counseling support, and then any other areas. And so, and having, you know, research-based, is it research-based? What is your outcome that you hope to expect? Explain what this activity is going to be. And then, having some district oversight of that, to make sure it's in alignment with the LCAP and what we're hoping to achieve, as well as the state priority areas. And then, having that reflection each year, looking at those activities, did we see the outcomes we wanted to see? What was the reason for not seeing those outcomes or the achievement, and what we're going to do about it? And then also, the cost, because we need to be mindful of the cost, things increase over time, especially salaries, so we need to make sure that if it's something that's going to be ongoing, we're monitoring that, that we're not going to eventually run out of funds to support this program. So, to orient you to the LCAP, the 22-page document I was telling you about, it's divided into three sections, the first section is the stakeholder engagement, and it's really just a narrative of how we engage the stakeholders, so you'll actually see, you know, that first slide I showed you with all the meetings, those are all into that section. If you, I think you have a copy of the LCAP in front of you, in your packet you've received, but where it starts, from where the district is information, it's on page four, so there's three pages of guiding questions from the state, the template, just so that you understand that, you know, the 22 pages is not all district information, it's just more background information too. And so then, the first section is stakeholder engagement, as I said, and so it explains a narrative of how we involved everybody. The next section is the Goals and Progress Indicators, and I'll show you what that looks like in a moment, and then the last section is Actions, Services, and Expenditures.
Just for clue-
Yes.
Just for clarity, who will be the stakeholders?
Who are the stakeholders? So, if we go back, oop, there, this slide. So, stakeholders are all of our district staff, so administrative council, teachers, our AFT union, CSEA union, parent invol-, so parents, and then, that's everybody. So, the community, basically. All right, so the Goals and Progress Indicators, so that is in a chart, and this is a template that the state created, and they're still, I think they're going to change it next year, it's not in the most friendly format, but if you take a look at the far-left side first, what you have to do is identify a need or a metric, what is the need of the district, and so, this is just a sample of one, but we have about five or six. And then, what goal of our district goals does that need address, or the goal addresses that need? The next one is applicable pupil subgroups. Our district majority, we have a large number of low-income, free and reduced-lunch students and English learners, and so, a lot of these activities relate to all of our students, and so, this is where we would identify certain student groups, but this is for all. And then, since all of our schools have high populations of those student groups, then all of our schools relate to these goals and activities. And then, the next column is blank, you'll notice, because that's the annual update, this is our first year, so we don't have an annual update, but next year it will be included. And then the next section, what will be different and improved for students based on identified metrics, so this is how we're going to measure those goals and that need, and so, year one, year two, year three of the LCAP. The LCAP is always a three-year plan, but kind of like the budget, you project out, but each year, you revise. And so, we have year one, how we're going to measure, and since a lot of this is new to us, some of the things we haven't done before, we haven't had any kind of measure, then we have to establish a baseline in year one, and then we'll have some improving over time. And we can adjust it next year after we see, oh, you know, this needs, we need to, we're reflecting on it, we need to adjust the baseline, or we need to adjust the measure. And then the last column is those eight priority areas, which one is addressed in that need or metric, and so this is just a sample of what the Goals and Progress Indicators look like. The next section, or the last section, is then, based on those goals, what are the actions, services, and expenditures? And so, the first column is the goal, and so I just abbreviated, Goal 1 relates to that first goal, and then P1, 2, that's the priority areas, those eight state priority areas. The next column are the actions and services, so we tried to keep it broad enough so that it encompasses all the things we're doing, because remember, these aren't, this is not supposed to be specific and detailed, that's in the budget, but this is just to share, you know, we're going to provide professional learning for staff, so that's professional development. Who is it for? It's for the district-wide, we'll have to update it annually. And then, what actions are performed or services provided in each school year, so what are we doing? So, a lot of it is salaries, or stipends, or coaching costs, sub-costs. And then, in the first year, we have to say, we had to say what funding source it's coming out of, so the Common Core Implementation On-Time Funds, the Supplemental Concentration Grant, or General Fund, which is all LCFF, and then about how much it will cost. And we don't need to do it in the next few years, because we have to do that each year, it's only in year one of the LCAP that you say that. And so then, you can see another example down here, is this is where we're providing site funding, so each site is going to determine what their school needs are, their specific needs within the LCAP priorities and the LCAP district alignment. And so, a lot of it is for salaries for different activities, as well as instructional or intervention materials. Oh, and then, in the actions and services, there is another section, it's just a narrative of what all this is, so they ask you to then tell in a story, so you'll see that in the draft LCAP.
Keeping with the Common Core standards.
Yes. Justify your thinking.
And justify your thinking, exactly.
So, next steps, as I said, this is just kind of a preview, just for transparency, and so, if there are any suggestions or questions, please ask, and we can incorporate them into the plan, but I anticipate, the consensus was really that we're, you know, on the right track, it was really just clarifying questions, so you may be seeing the same draft again on June 11th for the public hearing. All questions, this is where we're required, any questions need to then be responded in writing by the district, but we're already doing it, I'll just add to my running list of questions. And they are posted on the district website already, and those questions will also be posted, and any questions that come tonight. And then, during the June 11th Governing Board meeting, you'll also see the budget for the LCAP, which will give you the specificity of all these action items. And then, we have to have it approved by the Governing Board by the end of June, June 30th, and so that means, at the June 25th, that would be our final, we'd request approval, so that we can then send it to the San Mateo County Office of Education, they're the governing body, they'll be approving the plan, and so we have to submit it to them by July 1st, and then, they have to tell us by October 8th if it's approved or not. But we, I have already actually met with them with a draft plan, to say, are we on the right track, and they tell us that we are, so I feel like we're in pretty good shape. And then, as I mentioned, the questions are on the website, and they'll be posted, updated as questions are asked. And any questions for me right now, or from the public?
So, we actually did not get a copy of the draft plan?
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Oh, I apologize.
It's an attachment on, okay.
It's an attachment online.
Okay.
So, I had a question.
I would've made copies, sorry.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
If I may add, that the LCAP will have to be approved by the board before the budget may be approved. Budget cannot be approved before the LCAP.
Right.
We'll just make sure that, that's the order, and that should fall in the right order.
On the agenda, you mean, not on the days?
Yeah, on the agenda.
Period. So, on the slide that says what's changed, the clerical support for district nurses, how many district nurses do we have?
Two.
Two?
So, one for each of them.
Are they full-time?
The clerical support?
No, the district nurses.
They-
We have one full-time.
One is right here.
Aye.
The full-time is right here.
One almost full-time.
All right.
Cannot.
Yeah, did you want to come say something? Is that all right?
Yeah.
No?
That's fine.
Hi, I'm Sandy Leinbarg, I'm one of the district nurses. I think your question was how many, or?
Yeah, how many nurses do we have?
There's two nurses, actually, 1.75.
All right.
Nurse Anne is the other nurse, Anne Dejarnet, and she works 0.75.
All right. And so, what kind of support would you need? I mean, I heard a little bit from Ms. McCullogh, but since you're here, you could tell us.
We would love to have more district nurses. The ratio that is suggested is 1 to 750 students, which I know is impossible, but another district nurse would be great. And I know, I don't think it's in the plans for this school year, hopefully, in the future it would be. There is an increase of students with chronic conditions, increase of asthma, children with diabetes, so with those things, it just adds to our workload.
Yes.
And the clerical help would be great, to help with the paperwork, the filing, the follow-up phone calls, that kind of thing, but another nurse would be really good. Right now, I have eight schools, and Anne has six, so it would take the load off of us. We try to go to each school every week, just for about a half a day each week.
So, the types of clerical support that we envision being provided would be, as Ms. Sant-, Nurse Sandy explained, is the review of the health files, making sure that immunizations are up to date, making sure that all of the screenings are filed appropriately into student folders, taking care of some of the initial follow-up calls, and leaving the more important or urgent ones for the nurses to do. The hopes is that we would free up more of their time, so they have more direct time to serve students and provide education-related activities at the school site and classrooms, so we'll see that for the year, and see what happens, and see what needs arise.
All right, great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Another question. So, what happens in case of emergency, if you're not at the school that you're busy?
It depends on the emergency, if you, I don't know what you're thinking of, if it's a fall, or if it's a diabetic student.
A diabetic situation, food allergy, anaphylactic shock.
So, with food allergies and EpiPens, the nurses train the secretaries and maybe the attendance clerks to know how to use the EpiPens, and other staff at the school sites. So, we also carry a pager, but there are trained personnel at the school sites that know how to use the EpiPen. If it's, at lunchtime, we have two nurses from a staffing agency that help us with all the diabetic students, and I'm very aware of my phone at lunchtime, I get calls often if the child is either, has high blood sugar or low blood sugar. The nurses can handle it at the school site, but they do call me to let me know if there's an emergency, and there has been a few instances where a child has been really high or really low, and so, we have a care plan from the doctor on how to treat that child, and I'll communicate with the parent. We have care plans in place for children with seizures, and again, with all these health conditions, the staff at the school sites are trained, and we have a care plan in place in case there's an emergency.
And what kind of training do they have?
From the nurses.
Okay.
In regards to the directions of the doctor, and how we treat the child at school to make them safe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Thanks for the work you're doing as well.
You're welcome.
All right. And then I had another question about just the two-hour noon yard supervisors, well, not a question, just, you said suggestions as well, without micromanaging, I would suggest that somehow those supervisors be collaborating with student leaders at the schools, and I know that might be something that principals would handle more so than you.
What do you mean by collaborate with student leaders?
Well, it says, you know, provide a minimum of two-hour noon yard supervisors for each school site to improve student safety and security during lunch, so I'm just saying, each school should have peer mediators or conflict managers, and maybe these, because I assume this is an adult and not a teacher who's, you know, this are new adults at the school, but they should be collaborating with the student leaders at each school. And then, the only other thing was, thinking of the next steps. Oh, so, and I hope, you know, this won't happen to us, and you actually kind of answered it, because you said you've been having meetings with the county office already, but what happens if the LCAP is rejected?
That's a really good question.
We hope to never find out.
Yeah, I don't want to find out.
All right.
We have to rewrite it.
Yeah.
Based on their feedback that we get.
And we probably have to get all stakeholders involved in the rewrite.
They withhold funds?
That's why we checked in.
Not immediately.
All right.
No.
But they just want-
They would give us a deadline that would be-
Deadline to rewrite and resubmit.
All right.
For compliance, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, I actually do have a speaker card from Donna Hart for this one, as well.
All right.
A brief comment?
Hi, my name's Donna Hart, and I am a teacher at Daniel Webster, thank you for letting me speak. I am so glad I came tonight, because Nurse Sandy is my hero, my personal teacher hero. I cannot say enough about what she does for our students and for me. I've had children with just amazing illnesses that she's cared for for seven years straight, and now is seeing in junior high, she's basically kept them alive at school. I've had two children with severe diabetes in the past couple of years, and I've taken them on field trips, and it's like-
What do I do?
Nurse Sandy, Nurse Sandy, and she always answers the phone, it doesn't matter where I am, it doesn't matter what's going on, she always answers, and if she can't, she calls me right back, and she always knows what to do. She is a lifesaver. I can't even tell you how much a difference she makes for my kids, I have a kid with a seizure disorder, I mean, I can go down the list, and their illnesses are serious, chronic, and they really impact their quality of life, and without her, my students, my kids, our kids, wouldn't have the experience at school that they do, this really great experience. And I just want to say that I feel that she is so overworked, and, you know, if I write someone up for an SST, guess what, Nurse Sandy has to come give her another eye exam. If I ask for, you know, an IEP evaluation, Nurse Sandy has to come give them an eye, and you know, it's just like, it's constant. So, I didn't think ahead about this being an item tonight, but I think we really do need to give this a lot of thought, and a lot more support to them, and perhaps another one, I know it's expensive, but I really think our-
Okay, Pat Boome, you wish to speak on this topic?
Good evening, and thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments about the LCAP. Three of our team members from our After-School Academic Program Division have been participating with Ms. McCullogh and the PACT team on this plan, and we were really excited to see that part of the plan would also involve extended school-day learning opportunities. Right now, as you know, we're in the ESIS program doing tutoring, but principals are anxious to see a more equitable, full range of tutoring services for their students, and more extended school-day learning from the LCAP funds. So, just keeping that in mind is when we go to approve budgets, if that's still a possibility. Board member Ali had alluded to MHT just getting the garden grant, and that was written actually by our Daily City Partnership staff, it's the fourth garden that we've put in, we've done FDR, George Washington, another, oh, TRP, and then this is our fourth one, and one of our goals, of course, is to have school gardens going in every, every school, and other enriching activities and STEM programs after school, so just to keep that in mind and keep us in the picture, Daily City Partnership just did their Family Literacy Day event, over 1,200 people attended this year, best ever, fantastic event in partnership with the PTA and the school district, so, and we look forward also to helping the school district in their parent engagement piece, and working with any parent liaisons that might be included in the LCAP fund. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
And Melinda Dart?
Thank you. Melinda Dart, AFT. I want to thank and compliment Sandy McCullogh for all her work on the LCAP. She truly reached out to many different groups and taught this little workshop numerous- times, as she says, she could do it in her sleep. And I think it was, it was difficult to do when you, when it was new, and nobody knew how to do it. So, good for you. I do want to point out also that, yes, we do need more school nurses. It's, it's almost unbelievable that we have one and, and seventy-five hundredths of another one. Just recently, Nurse Sandy Leinbarger and I went to Sacramento. We went on lobby days with CFT. We were, we were involved in the, in talking about an upcoming legislation, which is about getting statewide support for more nurses in, in the schools. It's called Healthy Kids, Healthy Minds. But if it, but, but it's a dream, right? We don't know that it's necessarily going to happen. And we have to think about the reality of nurses here in our district. You've heard how important they are. But one final thing about their importance, we're concerned with attendance, right? We've made it our mission to make attendance important. Nurses can really help with that, when they're on the spot, to help with problems, and also in educating staff and coming up with plans that can help with attendance. And I know that if there were more of them, we could do more with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Ms. McCulick. And that is merely an information item, we don't have to take action yet. Okay, it looks like section three was all consent agenda. Section four, certificated personnel. We have retirements. It's spring, and I guess that's when everybody starts to think about this. So, do you want to list them off for us?
We have three retirement requests so far. Rebecca Martin has been working in the district since 1973. She's currently a first grade teacher at Garden Village. And Mr. Price is a third grade teacher at George Washington. He's worked in our district since 2001. And Sylvia Morgante has worked in our district since 1990. She's a first grade teacher at Thomas Edison. So we do request resolutions for these three employees commending them for their years of service, and I want to congratulate them and wish them the best.
Yeah, well, and may they enjoy their retirement.
Motion to approve the retirement request of Rebecca Martin, Dicky Price, Zil, Sylvia Morgante, and the appropriate resolution to be prepared, commending them all for their years of service to the district.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Like I say, bon voyage, and enjoy that retirement thing. Somebody who was teaching back when I was in grade school deserves the chance to retire. Okay, and the second, or item three, under certificated personnel, we have the change in title for Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Student Services. Do you want to, somebody there want to sort of summarize what this is about?
Sure, yeah, I'd like to address that. So this is changing the title from Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Student Services to Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. As you know, and you've just seen, a big component of our district plan and how we budget has been added to this position. And over time, since I've sat in that position myself, I've always felt like it needed to be Assistant Superintendent, since the duties and responsibilities are similar, and I always felt greater than, than that of my colleagues. And we felt like it's an appropriate time to acknowledge the increase in responsibility and oversight of that position, and return it to the role that it once held in our school district as an Assistant Superintendent. At one point, it was even an Associate Superintendent, but was reduced maybe eight years ago to a Director. But the responsibilities did not reduce, they increased actually, because Student Services was then added to it. So I think it's appropriate that we follow what other districts do, and that we achieve parity of position and responsibility.
Okay, and I do have a speaker card. I'm sorry, Ms. Dart, I skipped you on the last one. If you want to wish those teachers bon voyage as well, you can do that right now as well.
Okay, well, I will wish those teachers a happy retirement, and remind them, if they're listening, and I'm sure they're not, but people here can remind them to go to Chevy's on May 30th after school. But, back to Ms. McCulick, I'd like to congratulate her on her new title. And on behalf of the teachers, I want to say, we look forward to collaborating with her in the future, and hope that there's an open door policy. And just a reminder to everyone that good ideas come from two directions, right? They can come from the top down, but they can also come from the ground up. So let's not forget that, right?
And I want to say that even, just aside from the, the realities of what the job actually is, I like the symbolic nature of, let, for Pete's sake, yes, let's put curriculum and instruction on the same level of importance as personnel and money. I mean, personnel obviously are essential to that, and so is money, but, yeah, let's, symbolically, this is great. There, yeah. So... Do we have a motion to approve this change?
Well, I'd like to also congratulate Ms. McCulick. Right before I ran for board, I remember, it was when I first met her, and she had just started the job. And I see how much you have put into learning the job at first, and now, you know, putting your own character into it. And we do say as a board that we focus on student achievement and learning first. So I'm glad as well that we're putting this on the same level, or on the next level. And that's it.
Okay. Any other comments? Then how about a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to create a change in title for Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Student Services.
To?
To Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, and, yes. Well, placement of Sandra McCulick on step three of the Assistant Superintendent Salary Schedule, effective July 1st, 2014. Second.
Okay, okay. Mr. Waters has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations, Assistant Superintendent McCulick. Not until July 1st. Fine. Okay.
Assistant Superintendent. And if I just, I just want to echo on, on the, the atmosphere of tonight's meeting, contrary to how it was a couple, three, four, or five years ago, when we were going through some, a lot of changes and, and cutting. It, it does feel good that coming together with the administration, admin, us, and the teachers, and the students, and the PTAs, and the parents, it feels good that we are now investing back into public education, and giving back the dream that public education was supposed to be, because a lot of us wouldn't be here without public education.
That's true.
Okay, bringing us down to item, or section six, our board policies.
Wow, made it.
We have, yeah, we've got those, and I think if there isn't too much discussion on them, we can maybe even get through them tonight here. Policy revisions, AR 3110, transfer funds, AR 3350.2, staff and service and business expense guidelines, and the October 2013 board policy revisions. Did anybody have any changes, corrections, questions, or otherwise? I was very content with them as they are.
The October 2013 were a result of last summer's legislative session, when the LCAP was put into place, and so we needed to change a lot of the language in our old policies. We talked about revenue limit, and incorporate the LCAP and the LCAP, LCFF deadlines and timelines into the board policies.
Right.
I motion to approve the first reading of the board policies, administrative regulations of October 2013, CSBA board policy revisions, AR 3110, transfer of funds, and AR 35, 3350.2, staff and service and business expense guidelines.
So, hold on, just, just for, I don't think, this, this current composition of board has ever done this, but sometimes when there are really nothing in the board policies that you want to change, you can also approve it for a second reading at the same meeting. You can motion for that. So we don't have to go through this step twice. And there are more board policies waiting to come, so. The pipeline is full, so if, if, if there really isn't anything that you would like to see changed, and would like to see again, or have questions about, you do have the opportunity to amend your motion, to, to make it a second reading and adoption.
I amend.
I have no objection to that, so.
I'd like to amend my first motion to make it a second reading, and approve the provisions that I said in my first motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, no opposition. Okay. We have any additional comments or reports? No?
I do want to say something. I would like to thank the union members for staying for the, basically the entire meeting. I know there, there are some lulls in, in the meeting, and the people days away, just like in the classroom, but it is important that we continue our civic, civic duty. One of the key questions, or one of the key things that Ms. Dart brought up, is that we have problems of equity in California, which is basically funding. And a way we could change this inequity, and working together with administration, our parents, and the unions, and the teachers, is basically voting, and registering to vote. One of the key places in North San Mateo County is that we are not registered to vote. So as much as you hold up your signs, as much as you tell people, as much as you inform them, if they cannot vote, they cannot change the way we live today. Because funding comes from the state level, level and above. And like I said before, I will walk lockstep with you guys to Sacramento, anywhere you want, if we could get people registered to vote. So you guys have allies here on the board, so I want to thank you all for staying, and once again, we'll work together to make change.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or reports?
The only, oh, did you have anything? The only report that I have is that we were working on that binder.
Yes, our board policy committee is plowing through the backlog.
Yeah.
And you were impressively fast, I have to say mysteriously. You're raising the bar.
Don't tell him.
Oh. He can sometimes take a week.
No, I'll keep it simple. And the only other comment would be that there was a report that came out about boards, and what makes them most effective, and it came out that school boards that focus on student achievement, as opposed to other areas, are the ones that are doing the best. And so I'm, I want to reiterate that again, that our board actually does focus on that. And sometimes you may hear us even remind ourselves that when we get off track in these meetings, that we're glad that we're keeping the students first, and their achievement first. So just want to commend my fellow board members as well.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of our open session. I have no persons wishing to address the board on closed session items. We'd like to close the public portion of our meeting in, with a moment of silence in memory of several people connected with our district. Robert Bobby Edmund Woodworth, who is the son of Joyce Woodworth, retired administrator. Olivia Anders, sister of Sonia Ray's, Personnel Commissioner. Robert Tobner, husband of Karen Tobner, who's a retired teacher in our district. And Kathy Soto, who's the cousin of Marie Brazuela, who's passed away. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. And this closes the public portion of our meeting.
Ten minutes?
Right. We want to be back on duty.
Don't walk away too far. There's some signatures that Ms. Kovar I need to gather.